By my watch, it's 7:00. I'll call this March 10th, 2015 Board of Supervisors Meeting to Order. We have Pastor Jack Rutherford from Sharon Baptist Church to give the implication. And after that, we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Rutherford.
Father God, lead your people with kindness and govern us with compassion. Give us the Spirit of Wisdom to lead this land that we live in, this special place called With County. Help us to be like you in word and deed. Help us, Heavenly Father, to be able to recognize the difference between right and wrong and choose what is right. Help us to be eager in doing your will, because, Heavenly Father, without your help, we cannot find us. And I ask this in the name of my Savior, Jesus Christ, who shall reign forever. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to welcome everyone tonight. Thanks for coming. We'll move right into Citizens Time. There's nobody signed up for Citizens Time. So a closed Citizens Time. And we now have a public hearing. I'll read the notice. Notice is hereby given that the With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on the proposed issue of bonds at a one-time, from time to time, by With County. The estimated maximum aggregate amount of the bonds is $3,754,000. The general purpose for which the bonds are to be issued and the proposed use for the proceeds of such bonds are, A, to finance the cost of capital improvements to the county water system, including the Byrne Springs Water Project, for which use more than 10% of the total bond proceeds are expected to be used, and B, to pay the cost of issuing the bonds. The public hearing, which may be continued or adjourned, and at which persons may appear and present their views on the proposed bond issue, will be heard at 7:05 PM or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard on March 10th, 2015, before the Board in the boardroom of the County Administration Building located at 340 South 6th Street in Withville, Virginia. I will now open the floor for the public hearing. Does anybody present wish to speak on the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. It's not in your board package, but in front of you, you have a resolution authorizing the issue and sale of general obligation bonds and water revenue bonds for With County, Virginia, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,754,000, and providing for the form details and the payment of the bonds. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye with one. Motion passes six with one absent.
Trying to turn my phone off so it wouldn't go off.
Moving on with the agenda, have the minutes of the previous meeting.
I make a motion, we approve minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, or changes need to be made to the minutes. Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye. Motion passes six with one absent. Payment of invoices, do I have a motion to pay the invoices?
Mr. Chairman, I like it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, pay the invoices. Are there any invoice any board member would like to discuss or have any questions about? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes six with one absent. Okay, moving into new business. Have resolution, Mr. Ryan Walker?
I'm here to speak to you today about the resolution. I believe you have a copy in your packet. It's called the Put Kids First Campaign and Rally.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, first of all, for the opportunity to be here to speak before you today. My name is Ryan Walker. I'm a teacher at Sheffy Elementary, co-president of the With County Education Association, and a resident of With County in the Graham's Forge area. I come here today to tell you about a campaign that deserves your support. It is a campaign that aims to raise up our children and youth and provide them the opportunity to realize their dreams and become Virginia's next generation of leaders. Here are a couple statistics to keep in mind as I speak. Virginia ranks as the 10th wealthiest state in the country, but we are 39th among all states in per pupil funding. And second, in the last several years, the state has cut its education funding by 17%. And across the state, we've had 5,000 education jobs cut, even though student enrollments continue to go up. In our county alone, you, as the Board of Supervisors, have been asked to give more and more money to education each year to make up for the lack of funding from the state. We thank you for the positive working relationship you maintain with our school board. We also thank you for making education a priority in our county by finding funds to support our schools, even when the state declines to fund the mandates on our schools. Even with the additional funding from the Board of Supervisors, our county has had to cut school budgets and personnel, supplies, transportation, and the list goes on. This is because of the state funding continuing to fall short. When state funding falls short, kids get short-changed. Class sizes go up, valuable programs and electives are cut, school facilities become outdated. We can't allow this to go on. And that's why the Virginia Education Association and the Virginia Parent Teacher Association, the VEA, and Virginia PTA have joined together for a campaign called Put Kids First. We believe that the Commonwealth has the capacity and knowledge to truly transform the lives of our children by ensuring that every single child has access to a high-quality public education from preschool to graduation. What's stopping us? We know how to substantially improve the lives of Virginia's children, but our decision-makers have not shown the will to make it happen. We have not demanded enough from our elected leaders or from ourselves. That must change. If we invest now in the education of Virginia's students, we will. Help every child reach his or her potential. We will increase the number of graduates ready to begin high-skilled careers in Virginia's new economy, and we will reduce the human and financial costs associated with school failure and dropouts. Those goals are worth fighting for. We need to put an end to the excuses. The Put Kids Campaign, Put Kids First Campaign, will mobilize thousands of Virginians to demand that Virginia's elected leaders place the needs of Virginia's children and public schools first. As a part of our campaign, we are having a special event that I'd like to make you aware of. On Saturday, April 18th, we are holding a special rally at the State Capitol to support Virginia students and public education. We expect teachers and other school employees, parents and families, members of the faith community, and many others to join us to demand that our leaders put kids first. I invite all of you and all of those present here today to attend the rally on April 18th in Richmond and learn more about the campaign. There is a website dedicated to that at www-goodforvirginia.org/putkidsfirst, or you can just Google "April 18th Put Kids First Campaign" and it'll come right up. Any community members who would like to attend can have a free ride on a charter bus. There will be buses at the Withville Community College that morning, April 18th. We will convene at the Richmond Convention Center after the bus ride, where there'll be refreshments and family events. Kids are invited to come with your families. Then we will march to the Capitol Building. The buses will return to WCC that evening. If you'd like to reserve a seat on that bus, you can use the website I mentioned above or the form that I have for you tonight. We will post updates on the rally details as they are finalized. Please show your support for this campaign and the rally by passing the resolution that is presented before you today. A vote for this resolution will help show the state how much we, here in With County, value education and support the cause to put education at the forefront of our state. Our school board has already unanimously passed this resolution. We ask that you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Walker about the program?
This really just addresses the funding issues?
Yes, sir. Yes, our main goal is to, it's four, three or four goals of the rally and the campaign, but it's, the main issues are to get the state to fund the unfunded mandates that they pass new things every year, and very rarely do they ever put money for it. You guys end up having to take up the load that they're passing because they're not putting money.
Well, I guess that's what I was asking. I understand that, you know, the funding part. I didn't know if one portion of this was, like, to reevaluate the whole program and see what's not necessary and what, you know, what they can, kind of burdensome takeoff of the, you know, public school system. Because I think the state can take some burdens away if they would.
Definitely. And I think that's at the forefront of everything in education funding, is to look at what's logical, that we should be doing, and things that have been passed that shouldn't be, and get rid of the nonsense ones.
May I ask any questions? Thank you, Mr.
I would just make a motion. There is a resolution in our package. I think it's on page 37 of the board package. It's been already prepared. I would make a motion, we accept this resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the With County Resolution 2015 Day Show 5, Put Kids First. I'll do a roll call vote. Was there any discussion about it before we vote? I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Resolution passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Okay, moving right around, Building and Grounds Committee report. Steve, you want to do that?
Oh, I can do that. The other day, Buildings and Grounds Committee met and came back with three recommendations. The first is to authorize VNM recycling to close the convenience centers per the schedule that's in the packet, and it's basically to perform maintenance, paint, and just generally tidy up the area.
We'll take these up one at a time. We have a recommendation, a motion coming from committee, doesn't need a second. Any discussion or questions on VNM's request?
Part of that discussion was that we actually, that we'll get the advertisement, hand out notices to convenience centers, so that people will know for that one day, that, or that afternoon, it's closed half a day anyway, that they can, we can redirect them to other centers if they need to dispose of their solid waste.
Does that bring up any questions?
You said closed half a day.
Well, the schedule shows the dates.
Is it on a Thursday and a Friday?
Wednesday and Thursday, generally. So Thursday is already closed.
Okay. I've got you. I understand what you're talking about now.
Okay, here are no more other comments. We'll vote on VNM's recycling request. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next out?
The second item we came up with is to amend and appropriate $5,500 for the installation of a gray water disposal system and shower facility at the Lead Mines Rescue Squad Building. It's been on the agenda for some time.
Okay, coming from the committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next out?
The last one is to amend and appropriate $5,230 for the purchase, purchase of a base radio and power unit. And I forget the details on that one, Mr. Dalton. The one we have is currently...
Where is this unit going?
Up on the mountain. This, this one that currently we have a, I think, I'll call it, we'd bought one for another location. It's up there. So we, we need to get, make this more stable.
Any other questions?
And I guess a little background on it. During the snowstorm, we were out of service until we had somebody, I think it was the Thrive Morton, just go up on the mountain and clear the road out so we could get up there.
Okay. Have a motion, come from committee, to appropriate $5,235 for base radio and power unit. Do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. I'm going to amend the agenda here just a little bit, and Fire and Rescue.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, we, excuse me, met briefly before the meeting to discuss this. Lead Mines Rescue Squad wants to make an application to the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund from the Virginia Department of Health Office of EMS. It's an 80-20 grant, and to do that, they have to have the approval of the county and the, the promise to stand good for the 20%. So I would make that as a motion that we allow them to continue applying for this grant, knowing that the 20% is a matching fund to be paid by With County.
Okay, coming from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Just 20% can be paid by the county, not out of the Rescue Squad money?
What we had talked about, what my understanding was, is that we would be looking at financing through this VACO VNM. And my assumption was that the county would pay, but I may be wrong.
I think, Hoey, what you're doing today is, you haven't met and discussed next year's budget, but what you're committing for is the 20%, however it comes about.
Okay. Because they have to have that, you know, promise that it's going to be paid regardless.
I guess, speaking whether or where the funds come from, the Fire and Rescue has talked about financing our portion through VACO VNM or any other means. But we're, two weeks we'll be talking about a budget. I think everybody got their budget. We've got $5.7 million more requests than we got revenue for next year. So where it comes from, we'll be, y'all be making those difficult decisions next week. This money won't be needed until June, July, yeah, or so. And it's not in next year's budget. We've got to stick it in there somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, please, a second?
Yes, sir. Come on up, Sam.
Thank you, Jim. Let me speak. My name's Sam. I don't know me, I'm Captain of Lead Mines Rescue Squad. The 80-20 grant is the Virginia Resistance Rescue Squad pays 80%. The 20% comes from another locale. That's just all it is. We have the money. We, we're going to replace one of the older trucks with equipment off it and replace the new unit if we get this. It's basically what we want to do. We don't have to ask for no money for equipment. It's to take the equipment off the old truck that we're replacing and put it in the new. That's basically what it is.
On this old truck, Sam, how many miles it's on this vehicle?
It's got 118,000. I give Jason the figures today. It's a 2001 model. The lighting, lighting system on it is so far gone, we can't use it now. And the parts are absent, obsolete on it. We had to get two light bars replaced, and there are $2,000 to pay. That's the cheapest things we can find.
Okay. But, Mr. Dalton, we still can put this up for surplus sale and use the money from it to go towards it too.
And you might get Jason to check on this, but once you replace a truck, it can never be resold as an ambulance. It has to be bid it out. It's what we had to do in the past, if that's right.
Yeah, I'm not talking about using an ambulance, just sell it for...
Yeah. But, you know, they'd greatly appreciate it if y'all would do this for us, because we've, you know, we've done more than our share. Thank y'all. Thank you for your time.
Now, Sam, we won't guarantee that when we bid it out, those people from Guatemala or Mexico won't be heading that way and selling his ambulance somewhere south of the border.
No, not so.
Because I see school buses and everything heading that way.
Yeah, the trucks, that's the big, that's the big hit.
So if they buy...
I guess when he crosses the border, we don't have nothing to do with it.
That's right.
But thank y'all for your time, and I hope y'all can see the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody have any other questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Motion passes. Okay. Next out, I'm on the General Court House renovations. Mr. Dalton?
Called down to the courthouse the other day, there's a potential that we'll get an additional Circuit Court judge for With County, which is going to require that us develop another office and buy furniture. We're going to put together those pricing, and, but if that judge is here by July the 1st, we're going to go ahead and start. We'll bring back all the pricing for that as we go. The Circuit Court Judge also has asked for some renovations, and he's putting together a list of what that's for. We'll get all that put together and submitted to the Building and Grounds for the April meeting. What we will be doing is some of the stuff, demolition, et cetera, may get started before then, so that we can meet the July 1st date. And we don't have any pricing of this, but this will go along with the new door over at the General District Courthouse, and some remodeling that's going on, has to happen over there, too, that the judges have asked. And this will be paid from the Courthouse Renovation Fund. That's a dedicated fund. There's so much charge to each case down there. We don't have any prices or anything, but, and that's not in the budget either, but we'll get it in there.
And as far as the renovate, I mean, the demolition, it's just, it's just one wall between two offices, and it's just a, I mean, it's not really, it's not load-bearing or anything.
No, we put it up when we remodeled the old law library to make some offices for lawyers and clients. Now, if Sheriff Dungle was here, I'd say, hey, so good that we've got so much clientele down there that we have to make another room for another judge.
So we'll be, you'll be, that will come to the Building and Grounds?
Yes, sir. I think that's where we'll route it through, if that's okay.
Okay, since the finances are already there for that. Okay. Any questions on that? Hearing none, we'll move right on to New River Regional Water Authority Financial Statement. Would you like to summarize, Mr. Dalton?
It is.
From the Water Authority, from Water Committee.
Or Dr. Hausman, either one. This is just a statement of our finances. As you'll see, there's not a lot of money in the bank. We, since inception, we've had the same water rates for six years. That's our goal, again, next year, to have the same water rate. It's one of the lowest in the region. And so we don't overbill. As you can see, actually, on the one page, it'll show you our revenues and expenses and the three localities that contribute $562,000 each year to make it a flat-funded group. So that is pretty simple. We're not accumulating any money, but paying our bills and keeping the water rates low.
Anybody have any questions? I have a motion that we accept the financial report.
So, ma'am.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we roll a call vote? Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Okay, we're down to other. Mr. Dalton, do you have anything else to bring forward the board at this time?
No, I'll give you a little update. We had intended tonight to have a, the engineers here and give you a briefing on the proposed Progress Park Interconnector out the exit 41. We didn't get the numbers quite yet. We still haven't got all the numbers. I think I may have shared with a couple of you that we went from a two-lane road to VDOT under the, to a four-lane road, in some places, an eight-lane road. When we get to the intersections with turning lanes and for me, and all the things under, we're dealing with. We have not got the cost estimate, but just looking at the diagrams and mapping I got today, we had made application last year, I guess, for $5 million revenue sharing and $5 million matching. My guess that that won't touch a four-lane road for three miles. I'd throw out a number, but I would be so bad, y'all wouldn't sleep tonight, and I wouldn't either, so. But it's a work in progress. I do believe that after you get your briefing, I've invited them to the day meeting, and also to the joint meeting on the last Monday, the 30th, or whatever date that is. But I think the board will have to make some hard decisions, because my belief is, what they're requiring, we don't have enough money budgetted or in the bank to cover.
Why has it changed so much from...
Well, our original design and estimate was for a two-lane road with turning lanes. We're up to a four-lane road, which doubles the cost, and all those turning lanes and directional things that are required, is going to require huge amounts of land purchase. It's just, it's escalated, I think, based off VDOT requirements or in input, that it's not a simple two-lane road.
Is this coming from Bristol or...
I assume that's where they're meeting, and, you know, it's, but it is one of those things that I believe is, at some point in time, after we get the initial cost estimates, that we're going to have to do some soul searching on what happens that proposal.
Is there any, anything that we can do as far as topping the VDOT about...
I think we'll have our meetings with VDOT after we get our, this initial presentation from the consulting engineers, but, you know, I don't know what you talk to them about. Buy the property for four lane and build two lanes, or do as simple as you can.
I'd just like to know their reasoning behind why we have to have a four-lane road.
It's all about the input of traffic count that they require you to put into the traffic impact analysis, I guess is the right wording, but...
And that drives things like turn lane requirements, stacking distances within those lanes when you have stabilization. The more that it impacts, the more real estate it takes up. it takes up.
But on the day meeting, you will see it, then y'all can begin your soul searching of how, how we accomplish that.
Anything else?
Now, that's all this bright, cheery news I can provide tonight.
We need to search for more than our souls, it sounds like.
Sounds like we need to search for some pocket budgets.
We want to do some real soul searching.
I could read you my red page of lettering in there.
You wouldn't sleep. Just don't read that.
So you'll just have to wait to the 23rd to listen to that summary of the budget as requested. I told Mr. Reeves earlier today, I think everybody saw my departure this year, and everybody is, ask for the stars.
William. It's going to be a busy week come March the 23rd and after. Any other board member have anything else they'd like to discuss tonight?
I have a question.
Yes.
Kelsey Kane went, mightn't asked about the 4H funding, grant funding thing or something, was anything ever found out about that, or?
I talked to Matthew, she was supposed to go talk to the superintendent because it was going to be really a program through the schools, and I never heard anything back.
Okay, I was, because I, I was under the impression that we were looking to see if we could legally do it or not, so I just didn't know where we stood on that.
Well, I wanted to.
I just happened to see something a while ago on 4H and it reminded me, so.
I will check on that tomorrow, Jean, I've got to go down to their office tomorrow.
All right.
But she was, I'd asked Matthew to have her go talk to the superintendent because it was programs inside the school, I talked to the superintendent, he hadn't heard anything about it, and so I, I do know that we never wrote the letter to be the fiscal agent, I don't know whether, whether the school system did or not.
Okay. And she may have went back to Virginia Tech.
Which may have, I don't know, I just.
I'll talk to her tomorrow to find out what, what was, what happened on that.
But we are, they have a date, as soon as we get the phone system, computer, wiring, et cetera, somewhere around mid-April, they'll be out at Fairview Park, is their goal, I hope. Inside of the building is pretty much finished.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just mention one thing, the planning commission has set up public hearing for their next meeting for the comprehensive plan, we are out actively searching any city group organization that may want a presentation on the comprehensive plan, if there's any other groups you all know of, or anybody that may be interested, keep in touch with me, cast on myself, and we'd be glad to schedule something.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Hearing nothing else, I'll recess the meeting until March the 23rd at 8:00 a.m.